Good morning. It is 8:30, and I'm going to call the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for October 15, 2024 to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'll offer a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. Have motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Next, we have citizens be heard. Do we have any citizens who want to address the commission on an item that's not on today's agenda? Steve, do we have anyone online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Next, approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
And motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we have approval of minutes for from October 1, 2024.
I move to approve the minutes for October 1, 2024.
Second.
Have motion second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Okay. Give me half a second to clear my decks here. Hey Rory, you're up first. Our Technology Services Director approve to backfill a computer support specialist position due to retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Pam Anderson has, after 32 years, has submitted her resignation here in the Technology Service Department for the computer support specialist position. So this morning, I am asking to be able to fill that position a little early. Her last date in the office is, will be November 8, and then she'll continue to receive her paychecks throughout the year. Due to some vacancies from different positions, Jocelyn moving up and, you know, kind of backfill of those positions, we have a few months where we did not have a position or person in the position, so we have some funds available to hire somebody earlier than expected.
Any questions for Rory?
Move to approve the hiring.
Have motion to second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And we've got you now on Cybersecurity Awareness Month presentation.
Yes, yeah, thank you. So as you're aware, every October, we try to come to the board here and update you on everything cybersecurity-related, any new trends, information that we send out to our staff. And to help us this year is our new cybersecurity analyst, Jocelyn Sloan. So go ahead and take it away, Jocelyn.
Thank you, Rory. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. As I already said, my name is Jocelyn Sloan, and I'm a security analyst for here at Clay County. I hold a master's degree in cybersecurity with an emphasis on human factors, and I'm here today to discuss cybersecurity initiatives within Clay County. October is Cybersecurity Awareness Month. The scariest month of the year is also the one in which IT professionals remind you that the Internet is not just board meetings and cat videos. It also has a darker side, criminals and malicious actors. A malicious actor is anyone who issues an attack against another person or organization. Those attackers could be anyone. Could be someone who inadvertently allowed their computer to be used by the bad guys by clicking on a malicious link, or by a nation-state hiring paid professionals to attack an organization's infrastructure. Every year across the globe, thousands of work hours and millions of dollars are spent on recovering from these attacks. Fortunately, Clay County has several strategies in place to protect our data and systems. Today, I will describe some of the mitigation techniques and strategies that are used by county staff, what our IT staff do, and then finally, how the managers and the county board can assist us. Our staff receive literally hundreds of phishing emails every week. As many of you know, phishing messages are specially crafted and designed to trick the user into doing something they would not normally do, such as sharing their password or installing malware on the machine. Clay County staff are trained to identify and report suspicious emails. Occasionally, staff receive training modules on other cybersecurity-related issues as well. And that is, the handout that you have will be, discusses Cybersecurity Awareness Month with artificial intelligence. Artificial intelligence, or AI, has been a curiosity item recently. We've gotten a lot of questions on it. And so staff are offered a module on artificial intelligence. A summary of the cybersecurity response is found on your handout. AI can be a great tool. It can be used to quickly analyze data and quickly draw conclusions about it. However, AI learns based on the information that we feed it. Therefore, we need to make sure that all information provided to the AI is public information. There are several other things that our IT staff do besides previewing and organizing the training modules for staff. We also work diligently to protect our data and systems at multiple levels, providing defense against a wide variety of attacks. And we work directly with end-users to identify and remediate their issues. This brings us to items that the managers and board members can do. This board has approved necessary spending on cybersecurity ventures, and we are very grateful for your support. Thank you. As leaders, board members, departments head and others in positions of authority, we have a responsibility to our staff to be an appropriate example. When training modules are sent out to staff, they normally come at the short-term deadline, about a couple of weeks. During this time, the employee receives repeated reminders of the training module, including a link to complete it. If any employee does not complete their training by the deadline, their immediate supervisor is notified. Security-conscious supervisors require their staff to complete the security training. Such people will have already completed their own training and be able to speak to its relevance to their staff. And so, as leaders of the county, we have a responsibility to set the bar for all of our staff, completing our own training in a timely manner, and encouraging all those around us to complete theirs as well. Cybersecurity affects every resident and employee of the county. Our staff are trained in the identification and response to suspicious emails. Our IT staff implement backend systems to prevent the infiltration of malicious software to our network. Finally, supervisors, managers, and board members work diligently to provide adequate resources and opportunities for learning, training, and mitigation of cybersecurity risks. We are grateful for your support and wish to encourage you once again, think before you click. Questions? What questions do you have for me?
Questions. I'll just make a comment as a boomer who was doing green screen in graduate school. I mean, they didn't have Windows back in those days. It's a challenge for me, and I know for some of my fellow commissioners and some of our other employees, but the trainings that you put out are helpful, and the phishing exercises. I got nailed a bunch early on, and it made a believer out of me because I look real close before I click on anything now.
That's great.
I got tired of those, "You messed up." Click here for your training. But, you know, I compliment what we've done here in Clay County to try and harden ourselves against some pretty intrusive behavior. We've learned, and we've profited from those learnings, so I appreciate what you guys are doing. Anybody else? Our IT, or IA IT and all things computer, Commissioner Jenny Mojo isn't... You're good?
I'm good, but if I say I'm good at it, my kids are all going to laugh. They are far more pros when it comes to that.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate the job you're doing, helping keep our access to our services here intact and safe. Okay. Next up, James O'Donnell. Permission to hire two RNs for the West Central Regional Juvenile Center and supplemental V8 resources.
Well, Mr. Chair, members of the board, before I begin, I'd like to thank IT. IT is very amazing. We'd be dead in the water without them a lot of times, and they're very responsive, and Jocelyn's very good at what she does. So we're lucky to have her, and we appreciate her partnership. But I'm here today to request permission to hire two RNs and an additional $100,000 with a variable hour staff to do, take over our medical. We were in contract with Advanced Correctional Healthcare. The contract was due to be set, to be up in June. They provided me with a letter of 30-days' notice to stop services with us, which is for the best interest for myself. I didn't feel any need to fight that. I accepted it willingly. Basically, we weren't getting the services that we wanted, and they struggled to provide that. So in looking at overthings, we're basically getting from them, we were basically getting two full-time RNs, and basically, my plan is to replace it with two full-time RNs, but with significant cost savings. Do I get any questions?
I have a question, and maybe more for Steve or Brian. So the contract had an option for either party to leave, is that the way I'm hearing it?
Yes.
Was the contract up?
It's up, it's up in June of '25.
Okay, of 2025.
Yep.
But the plan is to leave early?
Yep, the plan, they provided me with a letter.
I guess, James, what I'm wondering here, I think because it took board action to enter the contract, wouldn't it take board action to approve leaving that contract early?
In this case, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, we're not the party that's leaving, leaving it under the contract. It's actually ACH that is requesting the separation.
But the contract is with Clay County.
Correct.
And so the two parties are ACH and Clay County. They're electing to leave early, but we, do we still have to accept that as a board? It's just a technicality that I want to make sure that...
I mean, if the board feels that that would be the more appropriate way to go, we certainly can do that. I think through the contract, I mean, I think they've taken, ACH has taken the appropriate steps of notification to end that contract. But if the board's wishes were to, to approve that and move forward, certainly can do that.
Yeah, I agree with what Steve says. We wouldn't have any really, any action against them. I mean, it's within the contract, and it's within the confines of that to allow them to do that, so we have to accept that, and it actually sounds like it's probably to our benefit anyway, but I don't think there's anything to do, so...
If you're fine with it, then that's good with me. I just...
I think it's fine. If the board wanted to take an action, just...
I'm just wondering if you had a contract, and let's say we're in a situation where we're unable to fill anything right away, what do we do?
Right. I think then potential litigation would be the way we would move out. And then I think that would be the board's choice if we wanted to do that, but I think in this case, we have an answer to it, and I don't, I don't think there's a reason to do anything else other than allow it to lapse.
That leads me to a question on this, do we have employees in mind, or...
Yeah, so the plan is, right now, there are employees that, so we always enjoyed the nurses that they provided and the services they provided. They advocated well for our youth. The nurses were great. They expressed that they want to stay. The issue with ACH is they didn't provide us the hours that they should have. The nurses themselves were great. And they've expressed interest to stay, and I know there's a lot of other interest in the area too, so... And in the meantime, for a stopgap, the plan would be, is for public health to provide us with some guidance and oversight during any transitional period time that's necessary if we have some questions or concerns or need something. We have the experts within the county to handle that.
And I'm sorry, what was the effective date on this November 1?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Can entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to hire two registered nurses for the West Central Regional Juvenile Center and allow for variable hour resources, and they amount up to $100,000.
Have motion second. Further discussion?
I know it's on our memo, and you highlighted it briefly, but I think it's important to highlight that there is an anticipated savings between $137,000 and $197,000 per year.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I do just want to let you know, as you recall, the jail also has ACH as their provider. The ACH has confirmed their willingness to continue to work with our correctional facility, and so that contract would move on as it has through June.
Are the employees that are in the jail the same employees that were working in juvenile?
No, they're separate. They may have some overlap at different times, but they're different people.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, we, I know we intend to, we intend to update the West Central group Thursday. We meet Thursday. Inform them of this development, so...
Okay. No further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, James. And James, as always, you hit a patch like this, it's nice to have somebody that comes up with a solution that not only meets the need, but benefits the county. So thank you.
Thank you.
And we've got you up on the next one, too. Request approval for West Central Regional Juvenile Center to compensate public health with costs of overnight, or of oversight during nursing transition.
Yeah, so the Juvenile Center operates as an enterprise fund, and roughly about 2/3 of that's part of a cooperative service agreement. And in looking for public service, I meant public health, to provide us with some help and assistance during this transition period, it's most appropriate that the West Central Regional Juvenile Center compensate the, any nursing hours at an overtime rate, whatever it is, to compensate public health to the hit that it would take on their budget.
This fits in with the item we've just had, and again, it's a need we need to address. If we don't have any questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Just a question. I'll make a motion, but it's in public health areas. Public health, you're good with this?
If there's a motion, I'll have us, I'll offer a second for discussion.
Nope, we're not good with this. Just kidding. The nurses, Teri worked at the Juvenile Center for lots of years, so she's still around, and Cheryl also, but their plates are full, they have full schedules, so the time, and James knows that as well, the time will be really limited, so there won't be a whole lot. Hopefully, the majority will be telephone consultation that they can take, and then Teri will meet with the two nurses just initially to set up a plan. So it will be really minimal, as much as they can with their full schedules already, so...
Thank you.
Oh, again, just state, for all of overtime pay for public health nurses at West Central Juvenile Center to reimburse public health for these expenses.
And we have a second.
Correct.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
We have our county administrator, Steve Larson, going to discuss change order number four for the DMV facility.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. It's been, been very limited change orders for both of our projects, and the great part about that is that the amounts that we've been asking for have been much less than what we've seen in previous projects, and so we're pleased with that. The request before you this morning is to use contingency dollars of $1,366.23 to cover roughly four different, three different items. As Commissioner Campbell has shared, over the last few, a month probably, a month or so, we had some issues within the DMV and the withdrawal management on card readers. In the end, they were able to come to a solution that there was no impact on our contingencies in the project, which was greatly appreciated. There is a deduct. The flagpole ended up costing less than what was anticipated, $1,950. There's an area where there is landscape rock that we ended up, ended up filling that in with the colored concrete, and then with an omission of some of the bollards that you have in the front of the building. That was an additional cost of $1,525. And then there was a maintenance strip at the back patio in order to get the fence up properly of an additional concrete of $1,720. The net, with a net increase in contingencies of $1,366.23, with leaves a remaining contingency of $177,972.49. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Questions for Steve.
Move to approve change order number four.
I second the motion.
Have motion second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Joe Olson, our facilities director. Had a couple items with us this morning, Joe.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Yes, so coming after Steve here now, I'm asking to increase the furniture fixtures and equipment budget within the DMV project. Just to explain it a little bit, we were asking to, well, actually, the original budget that was approved was $202,543.06. And so we're asking to improve, to increase this $12,709.38. And the two items that make up this increase would be some lobby chairs. We have 37 of them within the lobby there. About a year ago, when we rolled out the budget, I had about $2,800 in there, and so as we started looking at good-quality chairs, nothing over the top, but good quality, we come to find out that that total cost was $9,023.28. So the difference in that line item budget was $6,223.28. And then additionally, talking with Lori and Chelsea, they've indicated that their chairs are in poor shape, the ones that they sit on in front of, all the ladies do on the, in their workstations. And so I've quoted an additional 14 office chairs at $6,486.10. So with that increase, it would take the total budget up to $215,252.44. So if you go off of Steve's number there, the current contingency is $177,972.49. So if approved today with the increase, the total contingency would be at $165,263.11. A lot of numbers thrown out there. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mojo.
Thank you. This was brought to our attention during our last construction meeting. Certainly, we want to make sure we're fitting up the facility with the appropriate furniture, particularly for the lobby. It's a little unfortunate that it came in at the last minute, and I am going to say that I am disappointed. I want staff to have appropriate chairs, but, you know, chairs over $400 apiece seem a little expensive for me personally, but particularly because it wasn't budgeted. And I think it was maybe just a miscommunication on what could work and what couldn't work. I will say that what helps my heartburn on this a little bit is there are existing furniture pieces at the DMV at the center mall that we will continue to utilize, and so I think that helps offset costs that we might have in additional areas. But, you know, I'm not, I'm just not really happy that this came in at the last minute because we have vetted, and it's not on you. We just vetted things so much in those committees that, you know, to have this come up in the 23rd hour is frustrating, but, you know, obviously, I'm supporting it because I think it's needed, but, and we're opening on Monday. So, you know, I want staff to have what they need, and there is an excess in contingency funds that helps that a little bit. But, you know, going forward, I think for all staff departments, we just really have to be deliberate and intentional about how we plan for these purchases.
Thank you.
Any additional?
I just want a little bit of clarification here. On the previous item that we did with the change order number four, it brought the contingency down to, or 277,972.49, and that's what he's using here on his document, and then showing that being reduced by 12, which would be at, put us at 165,263.11. My question is, is when the board took action to take the $15,000 mower that we had between those two facilities, which, and we were going to, we were going to, we were going to take it out of contingency and move it to FFNE. Was that on DMV, or was that on the other facility?
Commissioner Campbell, yes, that was on the detox facility alone.
Okay.
Any other questions? Not, I would consider a motion if someone wants to make it.
I would, first, I'm going to concur with Jenny as being on that committee for this to be such a last-minute deal. It was kind of surprising that that came up at 460-some dollars a chair is kind of spendy, but we got to do it. So I would move to approve the increase in DMV FFNE to $215,252.44.
A second.
Have motion second. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And you're up again, Joe.
Okay. So this is in regards to the jail chiller system. About a month ago, we had lost a compressor within this jail, within the jail chiller system. It can operate on, in times of weather like this. It can operate with, like, times of this, but definitely needs two compressors. Right now, one of them, it's only on one. What happened is it failed, it needs replacing, so what we did is we reached out to, first of all, reached out to EDI, who is our engineer on this project, to just have a conversation on what would be the best route with this thing. Do we go rebuild, or any kind of scenarios that would help not be so much? But in the end, with them, and we had called out, we had an opinion in town from Chiller Systems, and then we called the manufacturer rep from Dyken to come in and also observe, or give an opinion of this. So all three of them had come back saying that replacing this compressor is the best way to go, and so what I did is I got two different quotes. Chiller Systems, it was the lowest, and I'm asking to move forward in a cost of $53,139.69. And the funds we would use this out of is Fund 19, so typically, we use, we try to keep $100,000 in the balance of that fund, as well as above and beyond with capital projects in times like this where we do take some bigger hits. So this has been, I guess, the first one I've seen in a long time, so I'm requesting to move forward with the low quote of Chiller Systems. Questions for me?
Question, Commissioner Campbell.
Joe, I'm just curious, what is, what is the expected life of a chiller?
Well, it should be anywhere from 20 to 25 years for this.
And this was installed...
Yeah, we missed the warranty phase by about a year and a half when we called in on this. And we did talk to the engineers and said, is this, you know, something you see? Do you see these compressors going out? And they say it's actually kind of a rare deal, so... deal. So this was, I guess, a unique situation. So yeah, that's what.
So it's been, what, eight?
What's that?
About eight years?
Eight years.
Yeah, eight years. The chiller itself is about a million-dollar chiller, just to kind of put in perspective, the fifty thousand dollar compressor within the chiller. So it's, just to throw that out there. But yeah, the chiller itself should last that long, but.
It's a part within.
Yeah, it's a, it's a major part within that chiller. And like you say, if it happened in the middle of summer, it'd be a huge issue. Right now, we're holding strong, but temperatures get to seventy-five, we get in trouble. So.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I see that the requested amount is fifty-three thousand, and you said Fund Nineteen's at about a hundred thousand.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Didn't we just pay for that Glendon roof out of Fund Nineteen as well?
Yep. So what we'll do is probably drop it down to, you know, that fifty thousand-ish, or maybe a little bit more. I think we have a little bit more in there now, a hundred and twenty thousand-ish. But so that'll drop that down fifty, plus we'll pay for that twenty thousand. And then at the end of, at the beginning of the year, we have a hundred and fifty thousand coming in there. And then from there, we're looking at funding the roof in twenty twenty-six. So from now till then, hopefully, we won't have too many more blowouts. But every year, we get that one fifty, so.
And I was just asking if the balance was before or after we pay anticipated with the Glendon?
Hundred, we keep a hundred thousand in there. Yeah, right, right. Knowing that we pay for a Glendon roof or something else. When it starts dipping below a hundred thousand, then it's, there's no projects that I like to take out of it.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
But there's an, each year, there's a new amount that's put into the, into that fund balance?
Correct.
Or?
Yep.
And that's the hundred and fifty?
Yes, yep.
You just don't like to see it drop below a hundred?
Right. Four times like this. So then at least I have, you know, I usually don't see a hundred thousand dollar blowout around here. So, but fifties can happen, so.
Thank you.
Well, would be, we are lucky that it's cooler.
Mm-hmm.
Because running a correctional facility, when the, when the conditions get bad and it gets hot and humid.
Yep.
I've experienced that in my career, and it's not a good thing.
Yeah, yep.
So I'm glad we're able to knock this out at this point.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'm also in touch with Carrie and Chris, just because when it did go out, it was kind of at the hotter times, and it, so they are definitely involved in this as well, so.
Good, I appreciate that. Any other questions, comments? We have motion in the second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
You bet.
Back to our county administrator, Steve Larson. Change order on the Withdrawal Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back here for change order number six on the Withdrawal Management Facility. As you take a look at the various items on the list, we do have, we have three different credits that actually outweigh the additional costs that we have. So before you for your consideration is a change order with a credit of one thousand eight hundred and four dollars and forty-eight cents. That would bring our total balance remaining within the contingency of one hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-five cents. And to Commissioner Campbell's question on the earlier item, this board did approve the purchasing of a snowblower trailer, equipment mower for fifteen thousand five hundred and nine dollars and thirty-eight cents, which provides us a remaining contingency of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-seven cents. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Questions for Steve. Commissioner Kravonoff.
Yeah, for those involved with the DMV and the, so I guess my question is, is contingent, we're kind of, we're starting to wrap these up. We're making a match of, how long did the consistent, or the contingencies stay in place? I mean, does that go out a year? Or, I mean, are there some things, like, you know, I'm getting at?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kravonoff, ultimately, it's up to this board when they want to finally close, close everything out. Historically, we've left it open for, yeah, at least a year afterwards, but.
I think that's, I think that's fair to say that we want to keep it open for at least that year, and possibly a little bit longer, depending on if there's, you know, it seems we always have some, something happen the minute warranty is up, like doors don't work or something.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Other questions?
Move to approve change order number six.
Second.
Have motion second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Right, we are, the committee reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Kravonoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Wednesday, on the ninth, we had the quarterly meeting for the County Extension Committee. We had presentations from Kamalid and Mohammed regarding SNAP Ed Health and Wellness Coordinator. He works in the Moore area, out of the regional office. He was showing us some projects he was doing, mainly with young children, immigrants to our area, and bringing in skills by building a small community through soccer and the development. And these are younger age kids, about four years old, five years old, and working with their parents in the development of socialization and then building skills of creating a community, or a club. Let's see, later, the, our four H Youth Development people gave the same presentation we had had to the commission a couple days before, or last week, which they did another great job. And then we had quick reports by our educator, Gillian, and then also in collaboration with the Master Gardeners, and updates on that. So they, Gillian kind of went through her progress of work she'd been doing throughout the year, being involved over in the farmer's market, doing tour gardens, and having over fifty people come through that, and to the Master Gardeners program, which is currently has about nine act, or seven active members, I believe it was. They now have currently seven new interns. So that will double the size of that program. So everybody's really happy about the ongoings of that. On Thursday, I had the monthly meeting for the class WCD. We got updates on the Buffalo Red One Watershed One Plan. Also, oh, and this was highlighted in a meeting last night, the watershed, a little deeper dive into the Snaky Creek project, which is now complete. And that was a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar project that came in under budget. So there's still, as was, just like the DMV and that, there's some contingencies left there for making sure that the soils are stable and the grasses that are needed, necessary to hold it and stabilize that are in place after next spring's runoff. Yeah, and then there was reported on the Water Festival that they hold every year, and that was in September. And, you know, once again, about twenty-two hundred kids were, participate in that program, so. And then on Friday, I had a, this goes to the family, ongoing work of the Family Resource Center. There was a meeting led by Quinn Hager and our CAP LP staff, just update, not saying it's for sure, but it looks pretty good that the grant funding for Sauer and both the state through DHS looks to be coming toward Clay County on that. One of the grants would be around two hundred, two hundred and thirty-six thousand over a two-year period, and the other one is in the six hundred thousand dollar range over a three-year period. So with that, the development of how this may play out, and as we've been talking about over the last couple months, moving more in a mobile thing, and in a mobile program, developing the program. So right now, it looks like a, and this could be subject to change, but there's a lot of agreement going on that this would be housed and run through CAP LP. And the funding from these programs would supply funding for a full, a full-time navigator for the program. And what would be different in, for CAP LP is the fact, most of the things they work with are people that have to fit certain criteria. And in this program, it would be, there would be, it'd be a non-eligibility. So in other words, opens it up for every, everybody, which, whatever that particular program is going on throughout the county. So it'll be very interesting to see how this continuously develops. But the funding looks, looks to be like it may be coming our way. So there are probably one, maybe one more core meeting, and then November eighteenth, there'll be a larger stakeholder meeting that'll be held, I believe, at the AMCOMs. And there'll be probably somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty stakeholders that'll be showing up, meeting places like Ascension, Sanford, our nonprofits and others to see how they collectively come together and collaborate to make sure that there is easy access and directory for people with needs, being able to have a central place to come to. And then last night was the Buffalo Red Board Meeting, Monthly Board Meeting. Just a couple things I'll mention there. Quickly, there was a couple permits for drain tile down in Woken County. But mainly, I guess, it involves Beckin, a little bit of clay, is the Upper Buffalo Red Restoration up on, up toward Buffalo Lake, and up in Becker County and coming into clay. Anyway, that potentially, we have funding for point, four point nine million dollars in funding. And there'll be hearings starting to set up in early twenty twenty-five to set up a water management district and talk more with landowners about the project and its, and potential assessments that may happen along with that project. And Commissioner Mojo was there also, so she can add anything she likes. And that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I attended the Chamber Candidate Forum at the Moorhead City Council. I had already attended the Clay County Commissioners Forum that was held here. I appreciate that the Chamber is doing a great job of getting together the voices of the folks running. I know there is one at the Dilworth City Hall this evening at five for their candidates as well. I tried to get into the Extension Committee for well over an hour on Wednesday, and the Zoom link that they provided was not activated. So unfortunately, I was not able to attend that meeting. Yesterday, I attended the Clay County PRTF, the Study Review Committee. We had a long discussion in regards to space needs at that future facility, and how we can best puzzle piece together what that proposal will be. Really good discussion between Clay County staff and Klein McCarthy and solutions in regards to that. I had to leave after two hours, and was able to call back in. So I think we were able to solve some problems, but I appreciate the long discussion that went on after that. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I do want to mention, I also attended the Candidates Forum. That was at the AMCOMs for Moorhead City Council. That was very interesting to hear the different ideas amongst candidates. And on October eighth, we did have a Land Development Code Update Meeting, kind of a subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, I went to that.
And Commissioner Mojo was also at that.
Sorry.
And that, and that was basically going over some of the changes that could potentially be made in rural development, whether, whether we allow clusters, or, you know, those types of things. And so there was a, I think when all is said and done, and I think we mentioned to you at some point in time, we want the full board to be able to get a complete redline version of what used to be the Development Code and what it's changing to. And I think really what we were, you know, we want to get that good mix of protecting ag, and at the same time, allowing some rural development to happen. As I've always said, we've had kids who grew up on farms, and they come back here and they want to live in a rural area on a farm. And if we don't have the Development Code that allows that, we're kicking ourselves for not allowing our families to come back to the, where they grew up. So there, you know, so I think we've got a good, a good mix of things there. We did have Bear there from the Planning Committee, Chair of the Planning Commission was there and, as well. And we did go through this quite a bit. And I think we're going to, you're going to see some, you know, positive changes, I think, that would be there. Nothing that's going to take us back in terms of the development opportunities we have in the rural areas. Then on the, let's see, the October ninth, we had the Regional Dispatch Center Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Not a lot going on there. We did get a full report from Woodmoreall, the audit, on the annual audit, and that came back unmodified. It was an unmodified, clean opinion, which is good to know. And then we did get an update on the twenty-two, twenty-four year-to-date budget, which there seems to be, there doesn't seem to be any concerns in exceeding what's been anticipated for that budget. October tenth, we had the Regional Dispatch Center Regular Board Meeting. And again, the, that, then the Finance Committee's budget proposal to the, or the, or the audit proposal was recommended to the full board, and they did approve that annual audit. We got some project updates on the, on the new facility. And there seemed to be, the most discussions seemed to be centered around the extension of fiber. There's a couple of other little construction things that, quirks that were questioned. But in the original plan, there was, there was really no consideration for multiple feeds into the building for fiber. In other words, it's kind of like when you, when the city installs a water system, you try to have it looped, so that if one area goes down, you can backfeed it by another area. That's what we're kind of, we're talking about here on this fiber, by having multiple ways for that to enter that facility. That was never done, to the point where it should have been in the planning. And so now there's, you know, I think, Commissioner Eber can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think they're estimating that number to be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars to do that. And of course, I made the argument that that is a capital expenditure, and that needs to come out of the, you know, the full construction cost of the project, which at this point, we've, we've already paid our maximum out on the Minnesota side. There, I think there was some suggestion that it be paid for by the city of Moorhead, or the city of Fargo, excuse me, and then that it would be special assessed back to the center. And I, and I kind of argued a little bit against that because then it would end up falling on the operations side, which would then be in our annual budget, which we would pay for. And that's not the intent of that. That's a capital expenditure. And so anyway, I mean, the work, the work needs to be done on that. And ultimately, they're going to have to figure out between Fargo and West Fargo, that difference in the overruns. difference in the over, overruns. And I, I'm sure there's probably more, Commissioner Eberger chairs that committee, so he can add some more to that. Then we had on the 14th, we did have our, our meeting on the pre-design. Yesterday, we had our meeting on the pre-design for the, both the PRTF and the potential moving of the non-secure unit to its, a separate facility. We started off talking about the PRTF plan, and I mean, we, I think we spent the vast majority of, we didn't, we hardly even got to the, to the non-secure facility, because there was an awful lot of discussion on the, what it would take to remodel, and, and when all is said and done, I think we realized that, you know, that, and it was good that Steve was able to get on from Solutions, because I answered some questions, and, and I think we've got most of the space issues worked out. I believe the DHS is coming next week, or this is this week?
Next Monday.
Oh, next Monday, to take a look, and, and we're gonna show them what a proposed plan would look like for that. We did get a, a little bit of an opportunity to talk about the non-secure unit, and based on the space needs, you know, we were, we were hoping to keep it under 20,000 square feet to avoid some of the B3. Early indications are, we're not going to be able to do that. For, for one thing, we're, it's got a, they'd been determined that it's got to have its own indoor and outdoor rec, so that, you know, regardless, that's gonna add some square footage to that, which would have been the case no matter if we build a new PRTF or we build a new non-secure, that, that, that doesn't change that. So, I mean, right now, as it stands right now, based on very preliminary, we're looking at a 28,000 square foot need for that facility. You know, so, you know, if you, if you, if you range from 450 to $600 a square foot, you're, in both of those instances, you're still coming in under $20 million, you know, and I, you know, I, hopefully, that could be a target that we wouldn't have to exceed, you know, as, and I think, I, I'm saying that for Paul and for Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Kravonoff, when they, we start that lobbying, but hopefully, we're gonna get a little bit more detail for you to be able to use in those efforts for the state funding. And I believe that, and I know Steve and, Steve was also there, he wants to add some more to that, but that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Wednesday, I went up to Wild Rise Waterset District Waterset Board Meeting, pretty much just discussed the permits presented, there was 33 permits presented, nine were table, and 30, 30, 23 were approved, mostly just for drain tile. Other than that, they discussed the Pearly Project, where they're gonna be putting in a dike, like they did for Hendrum and Halsit, that project's gonna be worked on. And most of the other stuff was just routine stuff done by the district. Thursday, I had to be on the Yellow Ribbon. There we had the discussion on a, a few Thanksgiving projects that are coming up by different organizations, they're going for, trying to get some free meals for veterans. So there's different groceries that have gone out to try and get money for that, to try and get 300 meals there for veterans. There's also that, that guard, that, they had open house at Minnesota Guard, that's gonna be available for weddings and stuff like that, too, so it's not just for military stuff, it is gonna be available to the public also. Be a nice place to have some weddings or what have you. Let's see, other than that, at the Yellow Ribbon, where you had, there's a Veterans Treatment Court, going pretty good at Detroit Lakes, District, District Court. And then that, other than that, we've made some donations for, for gas cards for 750, 250, $250. And that was, was also flu shots available. October 18th, Oktoberfest, and the, and the Dream Farm, probably, I don't know, I just put the Dream Farm, I don't know where the Dream Farm is at, though, so, probably you got that down. Okay, those are my two meetings.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Campbell, you had an additional?
Yeah, I, I do have one additional that I, like, yesterday, we had a preliminary of a Zoom meeting, or Teams meeting, to discuss, today at 2:00, there's gonna be a meeting with Senator Pappas regarding our funding request on the West Central Regional Water Project, and that's today at 2:00. So we did have, have a meeting yesterday, just kind of a strategic planning meeting, and then to, to, I think we're allowed, I think it's 45 minutes, Steve, is that correct? So we're allowed 45 minutes this afternoon, and so we're just basically going over what, what are we gonna present, that, and that type of thing, so, so we're looking forward to it. I mean, I know, I know Commissioner Gross, if you're, if you're interested in, I think we're gonna, that's gonna be by Zoom today at 2:00, if you want, I'm gonna go to Steve's office, if you want, wanna come over there for, if you have time to come over for that and just listen in. You serve on that committee with me, so that would be, you know, it's up to you if you want to make that, but...
Okay.
That's at 2:00. Right, is, is the time right, 2?
2 to 2:45, yes.
Okay. And that, thank you, that concludes.
Did you say 2 or 2:45?
It's, it starts at 2, 2.
Thank you. Wednesday, the 9th, I virtually attended the AMC District 4 Board Chair Meeting, just in preparation for our regional meeting we'll have this Friday. One of the major topics we'll be covering is the dues increase proposal. We are, there's a pretty pronounced underfunding of, of what our lobbying efforts should bring when compared to other organizations, so that, that'll be a discussion this Friday. Also, MCIT will be coming to discuss the increase in their costs and the reasons behind it. We also talked about the county reports and possibly limiting time on them, keeping them short. We've got 11 counties, and there is a feeling some of them go a little too far into the weeds, but, you know, I found it to be interesting.
I, I like those.
Yeah. I think it, of course, we usually end up looking a whole lot better than our fellow counties, so you sit there kind of gloating, but there may be a, a discussion about giving time limits on that. And so, Steve, you just have to talk faster. Thursday, I attended Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, which Mr. Gross covered well. One thing I do want to just mention, Operation Greenlight is gonna be November 4th through the 11th, and I, I believe we're, we're ready to participate in that, aren't we?
Yeah, I, I believe that, that Mr. Cannon will be coming forward to make that official here at an upcoming meeting.
Okay. Well, that's always enjoyable. And later that date, I attended the River, River Regional Dispatch Center Board of Authority. Commissioner Campbell's already reported on that in depth. One of the issues, the fiber agreement that we have, it is that a portion of the cost is gonna be covered by Fargo, since they are interested in having the work done for a lot that's south of where the construction's going. What happened is, when they initially did the estimate for the fiber, they saw two, I'm probably using the wrong term, but junction boxes where you could access the fiber system. What they didn't realize is they weren't coming in from different locations, they were actually connected to each other. So if you relayed from both those boxes into the building, it's, it was not from two separate sources, it was simply an extension of one line, and that led to the additional, the realization, the additional cost. And that completes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 8th last week, I participated in the Development Code, which has been well covered. On the 9th, we had Clay County Management. We had, discussed legislative priorities for internal departments coming forward. Talked about the organizational change in central management, and then we did, were able to have a tour of the DMV and the detox for those parties that weren't able to make the ribbon cutting. Participated in the District 4 meeting that Commissioner Eberger has talked about. Again, I think the big, the big piece is, I, I think, I handed out our legislative priorities that we talked about and identified at the policy conference in, in September, and so our district will be voting on, I believe, the top five legislative priorities on Friday. On the 9th, we also had a countywide fire, fire drill put on by our Safety Committee. Again, just appreciate the Safety Committee's efforts in, in working, this is just one of the many things that they do to keep our, our citizens safe and our employees, and so we appreciate their work. We, on the 9th, I met with Dan Molly and Robert Wilson virtually. We talked about the budgets, Diversion Authority, and so it was good to speak with them. On, on the 10th, participated in the Compliance Pre-Meeting Committee. Again, as this board's aware, Commissioner Mojo has been, has been appointed to that, and we really wanted to make sure that we talked about the scope of what we were going to be doing, trying to look in from this compliance piece, and we'll be setting up a meeting here in the near future about really starting with social services, since that's where a lot of the compliance issues came, started from. Met with, talked with Dan Kleist in regards to, to change orders. We'll be doing some cleanup, cleanup on some of the items that we've had on change orders where the maximum amounts, we've had some minor changes to those, and so we'll probably be coming in the, in the coming weeks, just to clean up the, the change orders for the two projects. Participated in multi-sessions for the NACO Leadership Academy. Department Head Evaluations on Friday, I had two of those. On Monday, participated in the Water District Capital, Capital Investment Discussion in preparation of this afternoon's meeting, and also the, the PRTF and Non-Secure Attention Pre-Design Meetings, and so, just a couple of different things, again, just reminders for our citizens today is, is tax day for non, non-ag properties. Tax payments can be dropped off at the Government Center, or, or need to be postmarked by today. And also for our citizens, just a reminder, that was mentioned earlier, our DMV will be moving to the new location on the 21st, next Monday. We'll be providing service at the Morehead Center Mall through Friday afternoon at roughly 4:00, and we'll start, start to move over the weekend. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have anything from you, Ms. Milton? Harold?
Just a reminder, we have a meeting after this meeting.
Jackie, anything for us? Is there any additional for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned.